Workshop of Madison County School Board workshop, August 25th to order. The first item is two point, uh, two point one, the North Florida Child Development MOU.
So, we have three sets of documents to look at. You have the 2324 agreement, the 2425 agreement, and then the proposed 2526 agreement. So, I wanted them all signed by side. Everybody could look at them to make changes. We could go through them page by page. If you want to start with the 2526, or if you want to start with last year's and look at the budget page, I did tell you the documents from last year where Ms. Joseph had emailed and so let them know about the transportation, that based off the email she had sent, they agreed to it, but since they were not, had not paid anything yet. This, all I can have, all I can tell you is based off what we had received in the email, that's what I had to go by.
So, if she has not paid anything, we perform a service, we still can get out of money here.
So, our problem was we also did not have a signed agreement. The, the agreement was never returned. That was the other issue. We did not have a returned agreement back.
Thank you, Ms. Hagan.
I know in speaking to Ms. Brown and our-
Well, there's no need to get in an officer's group.
And I, in our speaking to Ms. Brown, my two hour conversation, the agreement she saw, it had, there would be no transportation. So, she saw a signed agreement that stated that there would be no charge for transportation.
Well, it's not good, this board, you were here to know that the 20 things whatever.
When I have nothing to show that there's anything signed and agreed to and coming in a, based off prior administration, I don't know, other than having the email that Ms. Joseph didn't send.
Well, this is what I'm thinking then, while we bother with them providing anything here now until they fulfill their obligations. I know we got to transport these children, they need to be here, but if, if that's the way they're playing, we don't have anything what we're supposed to have. So, I'm, I'm not really concerned. It's not Ms. Brown's problem, it's the CEO's problem.
It's not, it's, it's not. We're just trying to help the kids, so.
Exactly, but I'm just saying, uh, she needs to get with us then.
Ms. Gaskins does, correct, yes.
Because I didn't understand, then she said when she presented anyway.
So, if you'll turn over, it's on page 11 in the 2425 agreement, and then, actually it's on page 11 in the 2526 agreement. And if you'll look at the budget, the in kind and what their proposed is. So, in, in the prior agreement, it said transportation and gas, I had found that, or fuel. And then there was, um, in the email, there was something, somewhere I'd found that there would be a discussion, and since there was no prior signed agreement, that's where there was the other changes and trying to go after that.
And so, I do know that we had a problem with this hundred and fifty nine thousand, three hundred and thirty five dollars.
Right.
It was the same board here, we had a problem with that.
I do recall that as well. And I'm seeing if I'm correct, our proposed, or I'm sorry, our expected in kind for this year is eighty eight, eight twenty five, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct, but look at here, after reading through that and all those other extra services they're asking for, that's not in kind, it's be even more than that.
That's correct, yes. So, um, Mr. Copeland finished getting me budget numbers, so we started plugging them in, and they're asking to have food service provided and then transportation provided. So, I know that in speaking with Ms. Brown, they cannot pay for transportation. So, we're trying to meet in the middle, so to speak. So, in this agreement, we agreed, Mr. Copeland and I felt like if they could pay for two bus monitors and then continue to pay for their food service, because they have been paying for their food.
Wait a minute, which one are you talking about?
On the twenty, uh, twenty twenty five, twenty six.
Twenty five, twenty six.
Yes, ma'am, the one that's in color.
And you said, uh-
On page eight.
Page eleven, page eleven.
Because I had the other one I thought she was talking about, yeah.
So, we're going to look at the budget.
Okay.
The, the two at the top of the page to the right.
So, we're requesting they reimburse twenty two thousand, nine eighty nine for bus monitors, correct?
Plus the fringe benefits of fifty two. So, we're not asking for bus drivers or fuel or anything, just two bus monitors. And then they also continue to pay their breakfast, for their meals, as they have been doing. And so, that MOU budget that they're going to have to be responsible for, which would not be in kind, that budget will come up to just under eighty eight thousand. So, actually, our in kind, when we put in all our staff, the buildings, things we do pay for, actually comes up to ninety eight thousand, which is our in kind. And then they have their in kind, their direct expenditures. So, we put a lot of numbers, Mr. Copeland came up with everything, and then we did put our pest control. We do have additional deputies on site, so there's additional safety. So, the administrative cost and everything, and that our utilities, we put that cost factor in there, because we do pay everything for that, so that in kind.
This is what I'm saying, you all are asking for two things only, to pay the two bus monitors and then pay for meals.
Pay for meals, yes, ma'am.
Now, we love the children, but our budget is not in order here just now.
No.
And, and, and I can see those children where the transportation is already there. You know, children are already getting on the bus, and I can't see us leaving those children there.
Well, that's the reason I didn't ask for the drivers, because they, not knowing which bus they may be on, and if it does have a monitor, so you typically want to have somebody with the younger children.
Then this in kind that we was doing with IUDs and all this other stuff and transition this there and whatever, it's putting a lot of work on our teachers too, that should work on, that's what I'm thinking.
So, I'm open for discussion on this?
Well, then, if they're not, if they can't afford it, then we get this program.
I can apply next year.
Okay, yes, the grant is open next year.
What did you say?
If they can't afford it, can we get this program? I know it's too late for this year.
That's what I'm thinking.
Next year.
Next year.
Next year, we can apply for the grant.
Because if, if they can't maneuver it, the financial burden is this year, next year it's going to be even worse.
Yes, ma'am.
So, it, it has to be next year then, it can't be this year.
So, Brittany, um, do you mind coming to the microphone?
And we can, um, some of those, their staff, you know, we, we can use some of their staff.
So, I know originally in the agreement, she did put the seventeen slots from Greenville, but you had stated they're not going to fill those seventeen slots, is that correct?
That's what's been told to me, yes, ma'am. The question is what's happening with those seventeen slots? I have not been able to get a clear answer, so I don't know if they're just tucked away somewhere and we haven't filled them or what, but we, we certainly haven't filled those. We just have our thirty seven slots in Madison, the seventeen slots for Greenville not filled.
No, we would have given money for it if they had sent that to us.
And I did offer a third classroom for them to cover those seventeen slots coming from Greenville.
So, how they want so much and they're not willing to give anything, to give us those seventeen slots?
I can't answer that.
When you offer an extra classroom.
When I did see this, everything was based totally on thirty seven.
Do you have our current numbers? I know that some of our pre-K, we're talking some three-year-olds as well, but I know that some of our pre-K classrooms are, have smaller capacity.
I do know we do have some space.
That's what, that's what I was, yeah, that's what I was getting to, is do we have space in our pre-K classrooms?
We did on Friday.
And then she said she, because the lieutenant said she offered, you know, an extra classroom. So, you know, they got to work with us some kind of way.
Ms. Brown?
Yes, sir.
Did she, did, uh, Ms. Gaskin not know we was discussing this today? Did she know about that?
Honestly, I'm not sure.
I'm just wondering why she is not here, if she knew.
But she does know that we're discussing this, doesn't she?
She does know that she submitted it to the district. I'm not sure if there's been any communication since the district received that email. So, that's why I've been doing what I can do in my capacity as the director here, you know, in the county, because of course I have no control of what's going up. So, I'm not sure, and I don't want to speak, but I do know that the MOU was submitted. I'm not sure if North Florida is waiting on a, a response to say, let's schedule a meeting or what, I'm not sure. But the last update I received from our central office that the MOU had been submitted to the district, which is what you all have.
And then, Madam Superintendent, when we were offering that in kind service and we were giving it, it was for Greenville and Madison.
Yes, ma'am.
So, you know, now it's only for Madison. It's being reduced, she's not playing fair, but we playing, we, we put in legal.
So, can I, can I, I want to, Ms. Brown, can I ask you one more thing?
Sure.
If a bus comes up and, and, and there's some of your kids there, and there's some of our kids there, our kids can't get on that bus?
Say that again. You're talking about North Florida's children or the district?
Yes, North Florida's children. Like, I think somebody said last week there was down at Sermons, a bus stops there and gets two that goes to the central school.
Prior to the meeting we had last week, that was the case, but after the meeting, you all authorized for transportation and meals.
So, we can do that.
We, we started it.
I mean, we're getting audit findings for it.
They started.
We're getting audit findings for it, so. And that's until our next meeting.
But I, I can't see it until September. But I can see now, other buses already going there, we can't leave the whole children there.
Well, they actually started being picked up.
It's not just an expense, you know, on us, but we want these children in our system so we can get money for them.
We cannot claim them on an FTE.
Right.
We cannot claim them on the ridership that we're picking them up, because they are not in our Skyward system, they are not enrolled in our system.
Have they been, been doing research in order and to get them?
I'm, I'm done checking, so unless they are truly our student, we can't claim them.
Well, see, that's what I'm saying, and most of these children are from La Marne in Greenville. And, uh, what I'm trying to figure, can we get those children in our system, Ms. Brown?
That's been my question for fifteen years.
Okay.
Is can the children be what we call dual enrolled into the district and have an ID?
And forget, you know, all this other stuff. Service the children, if we can service them, and we get them, then we get the money for them.
I think, you know, you're talking about dual enrollment. I don't know, you may be talking about them just being our students instead, and that would be up to the parents to enroll them, to unenroll them, and then re-enroll them in the district.
Well, you know they want it, all they want is them chilling in the classroom.
So, Ms. Hagan, I think if we do that, we're hurting Ms. Brown and her program right now. I think, yes, next year, that's what we definitely want to move towards.
Well, that's saying, these seventeen students are lost anyway. The ones, the seventeen that she got, they're lost.
Don't know where they are, right?
Well, the seventeen slots, the seventeen slots, but the children are not lost because of the seventeen, eight of them were three years old and was returning as a four-year-old. The other children were four and have graduated and are now in kindergarten at the district.
How many children losing service?
No one, because the eight children from Greenville that was three and returning at four, they're now being serviced at the Madison location on Central. So, none of them are left, we just couldn't get seventeen new students, which is what we would normally have done, filled those slots, but we didn't let them, we certainly weren't going to let them, you know, be lost. So, the ones that graduated our program, they're now in kindergarten. And the ones who were supposed to be returning to the Greenville Center, we have them at the Madison Center.
Seventeen new slots.
Right, we would have filled the, the ones that graduated, we would have filled those.
Okay, and so it's up to your company to, uh, to, 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 to decide if they want that seventeen slots, so they're not filling it. I mean, they're not, the new slots, the new seventeen slots.
Correct. So, that's what Dr. Pickles was saying, she offered us a class to be able to, still be able to continue to serve those children at the Central School, like the other two classes we have, ma'am.
All right, I want to ask another, another question. Is our, is them students covered insurance-wise if they own our bus? Would, I mean, you know, their students.
There's, there's a rider on our policy that would have to be enacted to make them a law pay if, if we were to enter into the MOU, and that's been the case the last two years.
Correct, because I requested that last year. I specifically requested that be enacted last year, and the same for them, that we were adding to theirs.
Yeah, we did that. On both sides, the district is on ours, and we are on the district's.
And, 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 and so if, if our buses-
Yes, sir.
Is picking up those kids, what are y'all buses doing?
It's in the district's fleet to be used, so I'm not sure how Mr. Ainsley is, but it's there to be used.
If you'll recall from last week, one of the buses, um, has a handicap on it, and then the other is only a fifty-five passenger, so the fifty-five passenger is not large enough to put in our fleet. It's, it's fine when it was running just to pick up the children for the Head Start program, but it's not a large enough bus in our, for our fleet.
To accommodate all of them.
Yeah, the reason I'm asking that is because we, we don't, we, we proposing to pay for two bus monitors. Is that just two random bus monitors?
We're proposing that they pay.
They pay, they pay, they pay for the bus.
Yes, they will re-
It don't matter what, what bus they own.
Right, they're going to pay.
Yeah, it's just your bus monitors, because we don't have monitors. The way they're riding now, we don't have monitors, so just you all's on.
Just to cover the salaries, and the salaries are-
Twenty-two, nine eighty-nine plus benefits.
Well, eleven. That, that actually is the salary for two.
Oh, that's for two, I'm sorry, for two. Okay, so, yeah.
That actually is the salary for two.
Twenty-two, nine eighty-nine for two, plus benefits.
Plus in the benefits is the fifty-two.
Well, I understand, I understand, you know, everybody's short on money, but to me, to, this is me, to me, you know, Ms. Gaskins and them, they want us to do it all. You, you know what I'm saying? They got to have a little bit of skin in the game, so to speak.
I agree with you, Mr. Chair. I definitely agree with you.
I think, I think with, I think with you all meeting tonight and putting some, because again, a MOU is an agreement, so it's a negotiation, it's a back and forth. So, the process that you all are going through tonight is going to put the district's side of things on the, um, you know, on the table, and then North Florida gets to say yay, nay, give or take, and then we all come to an agreement, and that's what's signed. So, that's usually the process, that's how it's always been, so this is just you all weighing in on what you all want. Just like they proposed theirs, you all are proposing yours tonight. I'm sure Dr. Pickles will send that back up to North Florida, and we'll go from there.
And remember, Dr. Pickles, that in kind services, the central schools.
Well-
But it's been adjusted, um, it's, but it has, it's not included, the Greenville stuff is off.
And, and Mr. Copeland adjusted it.
That's a great point, but it's been adjusted down to reflect the estimate for the Greenville.
And then it's still at, um, eighty-eight, eighty-eight, and I'm looking at it with a report that I have, I guess, that's-
It's ninety-eight, eight forty-nine, that's what I'm seeing, Ms. G, uh, Ms. Hagan. Well, another thing, and I know this might be, you know, a little, um, I feel like in order for us to render these services, we need a signed agreement first, because we, we kind of had the issue of not having a signed agreement, we can't find the signed agreement. I, I would ask that we require a signed agreement before we continue rendering services.
Exactly, but I'm saying, and again, that we need that from last year, we need that sign agreement.
And I think Ms. Gask-
Before we negotiate any further.
I was going to say, I think Ms. Gask, Gaskin, Gaskin needs to be with us.
Here, present.
When we make, to talk, to talk to us.
Yeah, I, I, I think they're kind of bowing out, is what I, I feel like, and, you know, I do commend you for continuing to fight for the kids in our community. I know that's why you keep showing up and, you know, being the voice for, for our community children, but it seems like the people who are responsible for these decisions, you know, could care less.
They don't live here, and they don't care.
Yeah, they could care less, and that's a little disappointing for the children in our community.
Exactly.
I will send this back to the, actually the contact, it was not Ms. Gaskins. I'll send this back to the contact, ask their board to approve it and send it, and then I will have our board approve it.
So, Dr. Pickles, before you ask for the boards, are you wanting to have a sit-down meeting to go back and forth? Or you're just going to make the changes and send it back?
Uh, so, like, I took out the family style, because I know you're eating in the lunchroom and not, you did not, you adamantly were against the family style, and that was in here.
Well, we've never done true family style.
So, that was in there, so I thought, let me just scratch that.
Yeah, that, that probably is just language, because as a Head Start agency, that's the language Head Start uses for meals, but in actuality, we've always eaten in the cafeteria, so you truly can't do family-style dining, because family-style dining is when everyone serves them, so like, we're not, we've never been able to do that. So, that, I think that's just terminology to me, yeah, but we've never been able to do family-style dining. Right, yeah, that's, that's family style, just like if you were at home, all the bowls are on the table, and everyone gets their scoop, and that's family-style dining, that's Head Start, that's what they, to resemble what a family would eat like. But we, we've never been able to do that here in Madison County. Some of our own standalone, standalone sites have, but the ones who are partnered with the district, us and Waukulla, we've never truly been able to do that. The only part of the family style that we have been able to do is just the language modeling and the talking at the table and that kind of stuff, but as far as the serving part of it, we've never been able to do that, so.
So, let me understand this, what we're asking for before we enter any other negotiation with them, that we want that contract from last year?
I will ask for that one, the signed agreement from last year, and I will ask for this signed agreement from their board before we proceed.
Yes, ma'am.
But I will not have you, our board vote on this until I receive a current signed agreement from their board.
In the meantime, I mean, we're in a time crunch, we've set, set a deadline for next Monday, or I'm sorry, next Tuesday, I guess, because of the holiday.
I would like to try, but, um, I don't know that I will have it.
Okay. If we need to revisit it on Tuesday night, can we revisit extending the-
Yes.
Transportation then?
Yes.
Pending, okay.
We're going to try to service these children until we get something.
But I think that's part of the problem, is they're dependent on us kicking the can down the road, you know, because we keep, we don't want to punish the children, but at the same time, if we don't hold their feet to the fire and say it's, it's now or never, then they're just going to keep kicking the can down the road. So, so we have to rip the Band-Aid off and, and make them make a decision.
It's how they reply, it's how we do reply.
So, we can tell them we, we want an update to approve at our September sixteenth board meeting? Yes, ma'am, and then we can discuss transportation next week.
I'll email her after the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I got on the calendar.
Ever thought, is all minds and hearts clear on this memorandum of understanding what we're going to do? Everybody understand what's happening? Now the ball's in their court. Okay, um, two point two, staffing table, Dr. Pickles.
So, last Monday, so you had two items before you, Ms. Gibson asked for the, um, study, which is not a study, it is literally a living document. It is the spreadsheet that I sat down and went over with each of you. It was three pages. It shows you each one, the high and the low, for the two school sites, the proposed numbers, and then the district, what we were eliminating, so there is that. From there is what, um, the staffing plan, where we created this, uh, the staffing allocation manual, and where it has been revised on May nineteenth and then June sixteenth. So, in here, I have also gone ahead and updated based off what we're asking after talking to the principals with their changes. Ms. Brown would like to go back to the two APs and four deans, just because after already starting a year, it is hard trying to find somebody that is willing to leave, that has already started a school year. Same thing, uh, after talking to Dr. Cunningham, somebody starting the school year, they're not wanting to leave their job. Talking to the former chancellor, it is also same thing. A lot of people are not wanting to serve as an AP, they're wanting to serve as a principal. So, um, if you'll also recall, our principals were going to only be twelve months for this year, and then we were going to take them back to eleven months. And speaking to Ms. Roderick, she had proposed that we also could look at, um, funding out of Title I. The extra months take them back to a ten-two, and the two months, we could actually keep them a twelve months. But the two months, um, fund them out of Title I, since we're down to just the two schools. So, that was something she had proposed. But regardless, um, take them for Central, the, uh, two, two APs and go to four deans. And, um, right now she has three, and she has a clodder para that's acting as a dean. He kind of does, um, whatever she needs him to do, she go, he goes wherever. But a para, whether he's in a classroom one day, um, he's, he's wherever she just sends him.
Let me, let me ask you about that. You said, is this para taking the place of the third AP?
Fourth AP, no, the fourth dean.
Okay.
Fourth dean.
Four deans, right. But what about the para that you're talking about there?
Mr. Thompson, it's Mr. Thompson.
But I mean, well, is he a dean or?
He is a para. He, he is still a para, he just is-
But I'm saying, to be a dean, a sign of dean, don't you have to have a four-year degree?
He is, he is.
Because I asked that question before, when Ms. Gibson, what's her name?
Griffin, Griffin.
Carol Griffin, and I thought she had, you had teacher slash dean.
She's a teacher, yeah.
And then I said, well, which is it going to be? And you said teacher, all deans are teachers.
They are.
But when was this advertised, these deans?
So, they're not, so deans, they're just special assignments, so, um-
But you, you made these positions, and there's four of them. Now, a couple of them are teachers, I mean certified teachers, so that took, that took them out of the classroom, and we had to get someone else to take their place. So, when, when were these four positions, because they are positions?
All three, all three are actually new or came back to the district.
That's my problem that I had. That's the problem I had, they're not positions until the board approved these positions, because, you, you know- That's the problem I had, they're not positions until the board approved these positions, because, you, you know, and so we want everything we do, and everything's right.
Right.
And I had, at the previous superintendent, I had hit on that business, and I was reminded about it too.
Yes.
Three deans you've already approved.
Okay, um, let me see now, I know that we had the staffing plan approved on April seventh, and there was, the deans were ten months.
April seventh, May twenty-ninth, and June sixteenth.
And it was revised on June sixteenth.
No, I got, I'm, I, I know it, I'm, I'm just starting with April seventh, okay. All right, K through eight was approved, two deans, Madison County High School, one dean, this was on April seventh. Then on May nineteenth, we revised, okay, the dean was still ten months. K through eight went up to three deans, Madison County High School, one dean, which is what they'd been having, one dean. Okay, then, let's jump down to August eighteenth, then all of a sudden, they became eleven months, which the, these deans deal with students, which the students are there, not eleven months, but anyway. K through eight, four deans, and then Madison County High School, two deans, I mean, why, I mean, that, that's, that's my question. They, they were ten, I can understand ten, but eleven, that's a lot of money, right there, add another month. And I'm assuming that they're teachers, you know, deans, which normally, they would be a teacher. Now, you can correct me, I mean, I've done my, I have the, you know, staffing allocation plans and all that, but, but, but I'm saying, were these positions advertised?
They are, so deans are teacher positions.
A dean for a te, what does that mean, a dean for a teacher position?
A dean is just a teacher, it's just like a regular instructional position.
That's what I'm assuming, deans are teachers, that's right.
Correct.
But when did you advertise these positions?
I did not advertise them, they were advertised as instructional positions.
So, they were advertised? Linda put them out there, and they were advertised.
As instructional.
I, I checked, they were not advertised.
Okay, in other words, you advertise it as an instructional position, but they're not going to be, they're not instructional.
They are deans.
Deans do, are not instructional, they may be, it's like myself, I'm a teacher, but if they hired me as a dean, I wouldn't be instructing anything, I would be, you know, taking care of the discipline problems.
So, everybody didn't get a fair shake, cause it wasn't advertised, it was signed.
So, I'm just, you know, we're putting it all on the table, as someone said, and that's, that's my deal. You know, in other words, what, was I wrong when I said all that? About the, you know, three different staffing allocations, and, but it changed, you know, as we went on, even though, and let me go back to this, this is what I requested, you're right, who are the people that worked on this right here?
That was our two Fabs gentlemen.
That, do you have, well, don't, not now, but if you'll email me the names, okay? Okay, thank you.
It's a matter of public information, anyway.
Mm-hmm.
But, um.
But, yeah, that's, that's one of my things, I, I'm not talking about the people, I'm sure they're all wonderful people, I mean, I don't have anything against them at all, but I'm thinking, we're, and, and it's a wonderful thing, that with the teachers, employees will be getting a raise, I mean, of course, they deserve it. But as Mr. Copeland said, our finance director, we have to tighten our belt, this doesn't look like it's tightening the belt right there.
Ms. Gibson, if you, again, if you compare to prior year, and I understand the issue about the, I'm talking about simply the dollars.
Okay.
Going with the, the deans versus what has previously been the allocation with the, with the APs, we actually do project to save about, probably about forty thousand dollars if you include the benefits with this model versus the additional APs in prior year, so it's, it's not, it's, where it may look like more staff of sorts, it's, it's not more dollars.
Okay, Mr. Copeland, I understand what you're saying, I'm gonna go back, and I'm, sorry for repeating myself, I did go to the other counties, and they're all, they have a tremendous amount of students. This is what they're doing, and you can all verify this, I didn't make it up as I go along. But in other words, these schools, they're, this almost tells our employees, you can't do the job, so we're gonna give you a bunch of people, that's almost what it's telling. You know, in other words, why can Columbia High School with three thousand students have one principal, and two APs, and no deans? How, how, well, I know, you, I mean, you're right, you don't have the, we don't have the answer for that. But I mean, okay, I can go to Swanee, Riverside Elementary, nine hundred, one principal, one AP, one dean. You know, Jefferson, Yolanda, eight hundred fifty kids, one principal, two APs, one dean. So, to me, it says, we can't do it with less.
May I remind this board that we all agreed, or this board agreed, we would staff more because of consolidation.
That's right.
Why? We have less kids now at Central than they've ever, you know, there were seventeen hundred students when the school opened up. There's room for plenty more out there. You know, we act like we've got a big influx, we don't have a big influx of students. We have less students now in the county.
We had seven hundred and eighty-three kids at the end of the school year, and we have nine fifty-six, cause they just pull kids out for the waypoint school, so kids, um, enrollment drops some.
Okay.
And I should've brought it, it's, it's on my printer.
Okay.
Um, ten fifty-six.
Yes, ten fifty-six.
Ten fifty-six, um, because they pull kids out now, and have left the kids that are in the waypoint, they're no longer in our brick-and-mortar schools, they are in their own school. So, our numbers dropped a little bit, they pulled those twenty-five kids out.
Okay, well, that.
So, but our numbers are still spot-on with what this is.
Okay, so now we have, we had not, seven eighty-three last year, you're saying, at Central?
Uh-huh.
At the end of the year, okay, now we've got nine fifty-six.
Ten fifty-six.
Ten.
Oh, okay, ten, ten fifty-six, okay. All right, but, I mean, that's just my two cents on it, I mean, I'm not in charge, and, you know, whatever. It's just that I feel like we have, if we have competent people, they should be able to do the job. I mean, we can say, well, we had three schools close up, yes, we did, but I mean, we're still, as far as tightening our belts, I, I don't know what else to say about it, I mean, that's, that's what I have to say about it, okay?
Well, my talk was on the high school, and it was on the high school simply because this is a new principal, we're cutting out the assistant principal, who will be doing the evaluations? Nobody else, the principals and the assistant principals, they do the evaluation of all the employees at the high school. So, who will be doing that, and that's more work than the principal? And she's new, and, and I was just gonna say, and I don't see what she can cope, was evaluating all those employees out there, and it has to be, she has to have them evaluated at a certain time of the year.
Yes, ma'am.
More than once, I think.
And so, that's my concern, and she's new.
I've actually, Ms. Haggin, I've actually told both principals, um, that we will have the district staff available to assist in evaluations for both.
Are they certified to do this? Well, some of the district staff, staff is not, they are not certified to do this.
They have to have the educational leadership degree.
Most of our district staff do have ed leadership available for them.
Well, that was my big concern, that was my main, main concern, she's new, and she gotta evaluate all these people, and they gotta be evaluated, and it's in a union contract and whatever, and, um, that's my concern with, you know, doing away with that, um, and then it's not gonna be consistent when these staff, um, district employees go up there and whatever, and not that they evaluate these people when they haven't even been out there to talk to them and see them and whatever. They're not working with them, they're working with the district, and then that's putting more due to their responsibilities on the district staff.
So, if you would look back over on page three, you will see that, no, page, page four, you will see that our coordinator of curriculum, and then our coordinator of assessment, so Dr. Holmes, and then both, um, Ms. Thomas.
So, they don't have enough duties and responsibilities of their own, and now they gotta go out there to that high school and get extra duties and responsibilities.
They will both be working closely with both schools.
Are they housed out there?
No, they're housed up here.
Well, see, and they don't even know the people, I mean, um, to even be able to evaluate them, they can ask them questions and needlessly and whatever, to say that they've been at their schools and observed and whatever, and all that good stuff, and they're working all that, they're not, they can't do that, because they're not familiar enough with them. All these positions, all I want these positions to be legal, that's what I'm asking for. And for the board to approve these new positions, and then what my main concern is, um, just what I stated about the assistant principal, the principal there, so I'm through with it.
Ms. Thomas and I have previously talked that we want to make sure both schools understand their data, and are looking at their data on a regular basis.
And we have so many new employees too, so how they're gonna just get so caught up so soon and whatever? I'm not being disagreeable, but that, that's my thinking.
Well, I'd like, I'd like, oops, excuse me. I'd like to ask the attorney, Mr. Reeves, Mr. Reeves, how do we, are we supposed to advertise positions? Should positions be advertised?
You, so certainly, the, uh, school board creates the positions, and so that has to happen first. Once a position is created, the superintendent does have the ability to put people on special assignment, so they can pull them out of here and put them in, in there on a temporary during the contract term. Normally, if you're, uh, creating a new position in order to increase the number of positions, yeah, you'd probably go ahead and advertise it. If you're creating it, if you're doing away with this position and creating the other one, then, you know, the superintendent can put them on special, uh, special assignments.
Well, these are new positions we are creating, so they have to be advertised.
Mm-hmm.
Those are the questions that I got, I, I, I've got those questions. It's the stuff that I need to be attending, thinking about, I was reminded.
I feel like I'm, it, it, let's put it this way, in a matter of a couple of months, we went from two deans to four at Central, and from one to two at the high school, and I, I just.
I'm, we are proposing that we go to that, when Ms. Anderson left.
Right.
We are proposing we reduce that third AP and go to a fourth dean.
Right, you went from three APs to two APs there.
Uh-huh.
Go from three APs to four deans, and the cost savings there, I used Ms. Anderson's salary, and that's gonna go down to a new teacher's salary, cause I just use new teacher pay, and that's a savings of seventeen thousand.
All right, did you take into fact, for instance, let's just take the high school, you're proposing two deans for the high school, one of them was a teacher in a classroom, okay, that means we have to hire another teacher to take that teacher's place. Is that part of the savings right there? So, okay, we put that, now we are paying the dean, and we're also paying the teacher.
But we don't have an AP.
I, I know it, but I, I think you need an AP, though.
Well, it's still the same number of people, there's a principal and, and two deans, there was a principal, uh, AP, and a dean, that's still three people, I mean, that don't, I, I reckon I look at things too simple, yeah, I don't know. But, I mean, that's three people, same as at the Central School, you, you had a four dean, I mean, four APs, and a principal, and, and three deans, now you got four deans, two APs, and a principal.
Well.
It, it, I mean, it just, I don't, I don't, I don't.
So, it seems as though I'm the only one thinking then about the assistant principals and evaluation of all these teachers. And I mean, not teachers only, a whole staff, so I'm the only one concerned about this.
No, you're not the only one concerned.
Not being able to put forward.
No, I understand, I'm, Ms. Haggin, I understand.
She's not able to do that.
I do understand that, but I, I've worked at a couple of schools where the district staff was the ones that came and done the whole evaluation all the time.
In Georgia?
It don't matter where it was at.
Well, yes, sir, cause rules and regulations and laws are different in Georgia than they are from.
There's no rule against it here, Ms. Haggin.
From Georgia, their rules and regulations are different from Florida legal rules and regulations.
Right, but there's no legal reason, a stat, a, a certified whatever up here, a, a district employee can.
So, you're gonna agree that they know these people out there?
Barbara knows everybody out.
I don't think so.
I bet you should.
I don't think so, and all these new, um, all these new teachers and whatever, you got new, young teachers.
There's two new staff at the high school, so, I can tell you, when I worked in Taylor County, the district staff were the ones that came around once a month, and walked in my classroom once a month, observed, watched me teach, watched me, and then my direct supervisor only came in one time.
And did you have a new principal?
To give my evaluation.
Did you have a new principal?
Um, yes, I did.
Well, anyway, the board decides on that.
Mm-hmm, but I had, there were seven district staff that came in and walked around.
I'm, I'm just not. With a new principal and not an assistant principal, and this evaluation stuff, and I've been called out on it too.
Well, no, I addressed this last week, and said that these assistant principals, they have an education, they've got the training, the experience, I mean, in other words, they got the whole package right there, and I feel like it's gonna hurt the principal out there, for one thing. I mean, she's, she's, she's working, she's new, she's, she's, she's qualified, I'm sure, but she's new, and wouldn't it be nice to have someone that could really, and I'm not talking about the, the deans, the deans are not, they're teachers, or maybe not teachers, I'm not, you know, whatever. So, I feel like we're putting her in a position that's gonna.
To fail.
I hope we're not setting her up for failure, let's put it that way.
So, the district staff, they gonna be advising the principal too? Cause they don't have the leadership that the principal has, so somebody who doesn't have the leadership gonna be advising the person who has the leadership? I, I, I don't see, you know, how that would be. Barbara have the credentials that she's supposed to have to be, um, a principal? So, how can she advise, you know, and the other person from district, how can they advise a principal?
Are you asking me if they have school principal?
Educational leadership, that's.
Or ed leadership, they do not have school principal.
And they don't have the experience of doing that either, of being out there on those campuses. Barbara's never been a principal, nor an assistant principal, and I think in our, our god minds, when it asks for principals and assistant principals, um, you have to have so many, um, years of this students and that duties and whatever, and just saying, I, I think that this latest being set up for failure.
Okay. Anything else on staffing table, what, next? Okay, not, two point three?
Now, wait a minute, don't have to vote on each new position.
No, this is just for.
That's exactly, you can vote in the room, but it needs to be on the agenda, you know, when we go on to the line.
Two point three, it's on, it's on the agenda.
I'm saying, when we come up in board meetings.
Yes, it's on there for next.
Well, the other part, which goes along then with two point three, was the moving of the AP, which technically is the AP for Bridge, and the Bridge slash Waypoint. Waypoint has become, due to recent audit findings, and, um, it's, it's taking a lot of time. And so, updated the coordinator of special projects job description to align more with, um, Bridge. We also have several students that are moving back into the district, and, um, I think it's four or five students that will be coming back to us and coming back to Bridge.
I don't have a problem with that position, I'm, you know, wanna make that position legal, so it won't come back on us. I wanna make all these positions legal, so it won't come back on us, cause, um, people paying attention.
Um.
They are paying attention, and some of them got more experience than me and you, and the rest of board members too, and know what they're talking about and what they're saying. All I'm looking at is for the board, but I'm gonna shut my mouth now, I'm saying what I had to say.
All right, you're gonna move the district, you, the Bridge to the district level position, you're talking about the new position, that you, the special?
It, it's a wash, it's just moving it from an AP to a coordinator, there's this, it's a wash. They're paid on the same pay level.
Now, are you still gonna have a principal at the Bridge?
It's a teacher.
It's, it's a teacher, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, because I'm going back now to Lou Miller days, where she put. Okay, all right. Because I'm going back now to Lou Miller days, where she put the ESE Director, Ramona Guest, in charge of the Bridge. In other words, there was no principal in charge of the Bridge. When you got, what, ten kids out? I've, we've, I've already addressed this before. And, okay, so this principal is gonna be going into a coordinator position.
AP.
This is what you want to happen. Let's put it that way. All right, is that, is that, is that, I don't know how to describe it. In other words, is that legal to do that?
Legal as in?
Well, you had an assistant, he, this was an assistant principal at Bridge, right?
So it's a-
Going into a, which is a higher paid position.
They're paid on the same line.
They're gonna be, okay, they're gonna be the same, okay.
Paid on the same salary line.
Can I ask this question, please?
No, I'm, yeah.
Okay, okay. This is the question I'm asking about this proposed position. Don't you remember, we talked about having a communication director, something like that?
Yes.
And that be included in those positions?
And it's my understanding that he's been doing that.
Okay, well, that's what I'm saying. Can, can it be included there?
It is.
Yes, ma'am, I did. I also included risk management.
Well, I, I did see all of those things.
I included-
But I'm just asking, we had talked about-
Yes, ma'am, I specifically asked for that.
Exactly.
I have been told that it has been included, and I can say that the communication has been, but-
I didn't see it.
Like a PMO.
But, and I'm asking, since we asking that, can that be included in those duties and responsibilities?
Yes, ma'am, it has been.
Okay.
Okay, I think one of the things that bothered me, and going back to our teachers and employees getting their wonderful salary, which I'm glad they did. But on that note, here we are gonna create another position right here. And it's nice when you are in a place with a lot of money and a lot of recurring revenue, which we don't have. Madison does not have it. We're okay for this year. And as Mr. Copeland said, this will be a million dollar project that we're, you know, in other words, to get them where they should be and deserve to be.
But I stop you-
It has to be paid next year, too.
May I stop you? Would you look over on page five, and would you see where I deleted assistant principal, twelve-month bridge?
So-
It's not a new, it's not-
It's not a new position.
We're not adding anybody.
This is a technically-
In place of. It's a name change.
Okay.
In place of.
Well, do we have to have something in place of? Because that costs money.
Somebody has to do it.
Well, I know, but, you know, like I said, these other districts, they're divvying out the responsibilities.
So, the Waypoint is taking time from somebody's having to do it. There's somebody's literally having to go out there and monitor those children, making sure the staff that we have assigned there is teaching and making sure, because we just hired another teacher. So they're having to make sure, they're having to take care and make sure, they're having to sit in on the threat assessment meetings.
Okay. Well, it's good to put these people in positions, but as long as we can afford it, and like I said, it's gonna be up to the superintendent and the finance to keep it, the ball rolling. We're not here crunching numbers day in, day out. That's not our job. So it's, this year, we're gonna be okay. But I'm worried about after this year.
Well, then we, we want, you know-
Again, I, we do have a mitigation plan, but we're not just adding projected million dollars. We do have the projected savings, and they're both projected, additional projected minus consolidation with some insurance stuff we're looking at and things like that. But I will say, maybe we get efficient where we can do away with the position. But right now, this stuff that's being handled under this proposed job, I can't do. I mean, it's, it's something we do need this year.
You got enough help.
Yeah.
So-
You always do.
I can tell you, when we were, the person that was apparently doing risk management did it in name only, because when we walked the schools and pointed out various risk-related items, there was a particular teacher that said, "How come nobody's ever told me this before in the past three years?" And all we could say is, "We, we can just point it out to you now. This is a fire hazard, unless you can prove to us this is fire retardant", various things like that. So had to point out certain things. It was never pointed out to individuals, 'cause the individual never walked around and did the walkthroughs in the classrooms.
All I know is, I said in that exit audit, and when they brought the Waypoint, they brought a notebook at, it was that thick, with, with, with things that was not done right, with, where we got cited for. And down the road, it's gonna cost us, he said, right at three hundred thousand dollars in two or three years.
That doesn't include our other options?
No, 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 that was just that.
That was wrapping up, so they were-
Our audits from twenty twenty-two, twenty-three.
That's what, it was a twenty twenty-two, twenty-three audit.
Sometimes we not charge all that money, Mr. Chair, because we write corrective actions, and if they accept the corrective actions that we take, then they don't charge us all that money.
Well, that's why, that's why we trying to correct them.
And so that's what I'm saying. We, we're not out of that money yet.
Not yet.
Mm-hmm. And it's a possibility we might not do.
He said it was a slim possibility.
I'm trying to put in things in place based on things that I have learned from a twenty-two, twenty-three audit, so that we do not have this going forward. Because we can't take those kind of financial risks.
So, Mr. Chair, if there's that possibility, we gotta pay all that money back. We better be, uh, uh, tightening our belt then, don't we?
Well, I mean, that's why, that's why they trying to put these things in place is, is so maybe we won't have to.
That's just what I was saying. You got to do it one way or the other. You got to, you got to agree that you're gonna do, or gonna pay it, or you gotta pay it. But see, it was just like we had to pay it until I brought the subject up with the corrective actions.
And, Ms. Hagan, you bring up a point. We, we have provided quite a few of the corrective actions, especially in our regular, not our empty audit, our regular operation audit, so maybe they will accept those when we get this next.
And that's what I'm hoping for, that we don't have to pay all that money.
Well, he, he, when he would talk, he didn't talk about corrective action. He said, "In about three years, that's when y'all have to pay that three hundred thousand."
So we need to ensure states will follow.
Yes, I do, yeah.
Well, and I will say, as far as the risk management is concerned, it is a necessity, 'cause, I mean, as the FISB, you know, representative for the board, you know, some of the examples used on what not to do are Madison County. So having somebody in that position to make sure that, you know, those liabilities are, are not happening is, is far more important than we realize.
Then they have to call them to our attention, and then we correct.
Correct.
Well, let me, I have a question. Will the staffing update and the new position be listed under items for individual consideration?
Yes.
Okay, I, I have a point of order right here. Mr. Reeves sent out something to all of us today regarding consent agenda, and it was actually due to me. I went over and talked to Andrea Messina this week. And I'm gonna apologize, and when we went up, let me start, 'cause I want the public to understand what I'm about to say. Last Monday, I request, I talked to the superintendent earlier in the day and said, "I thought there was a mistake with all this consent stuff on the agenda, and you said you would let Mr. Carroll know." So I thought it would be okay. Okay, I get to the meeting, and I see nothing has changed. Seventy-five percent of the agenda last week was consent. Okay, as, so I thought, you know, we went through it, I discussed it and all that. All right, I didn't have the policy at my fingertips, okay? But when I got home, that, I looked at my school board training that you all, I think, went to, and here it is, explains it all. And then I also went over and talked to Andrea Messina, President of the School Board Association, and immediately she printed off this, which you've all seen. All right, there was no need for a vote. There was no need for, as a matter of fact, for the people listening, 'cause you don't have it in front of you, it says consent should, on the agenda, is a routine thing. Just routine matter. Should we have this milk delivered, you know, with the company, blah, blah, blah. Very routine. A member of the board may request any item be removed from consent agenda and defer it for individual discussion, public comment, and action. No vote of the board will be required to remove an item from the consent agenda.
That's what I'm saying, actually.
I cannot imagine a school board member in the state of Florida saying, "I don't want that to happen." I can't imagine a school board member saying that.
It had never happened before until this.
It's, no. And so I'm thinking, did you not understand what we were doing? Or was it something else?
I didn't understand. I'll be honest, hey, I didn't want to do it.
You didn't understand-
But I asked Mr. Reeves first-
Okay.
About it, and he said it was the pleasure of the board.
Okay, well, but now-
I wanted to do it the right way.
Now you know.
Now I know, yes.
Yeah, I'm just-
He sent it to me today, and I thought of it.
This is the reason why I'm bringing it up, because this is suppression.
Well, I knew, then I told y'all.
And, no, this is why I'm apologizing to you. You spoke up because you did know. I knew, but I didn't want to get into a battle with the board members at the point. I didn't have this at my fingertips.
I didn't know, and I asked about it.
And so, no, there's nothing wrong with not knowing. But once we know, let's-
Well, I, I, hey, I know, now you won't have to worry about that no more, not with me.
Okay, I'm not saying you don't know, or you, no, okay. All right, I'm just bringing it to the surface, because you, as board members, have the right to remove anything from the agenda.
But that'll-
And, and I can't, but you, three of you said you voted it down. I'm thinking, maybe you didn't know.
I did.
Okay, that, all right, then that's, that clarified, then I know you didn't know, okay. But in other words, is this a form of suppression? I mean, is it a form of bullying or, or what? In other words, why would a board member say you don't want that to happen when it's right here in black and white, now that we know?
Now that we know.
Well, I mean, there's a lot of policies in black and white that get violated by board members sitting up here, but, you know, I mean, I could pull-
Okay, now we're talking about this one right now.
And that's fine. I could pull some out of my back pocket right now that you violate on a daily basis.
Okay, we are, we are doing this right now. We're talking about this.
And we can pull some more out.
I didn't know. And that's my, hey, I, I, I own that.
Well, actually, I say, when we're corrected and give them information in black and white, and we can just get it and just pass it on.
All right, well, no, they got, they all got a copy of it, so.
I own it, I knew. I, I seen it today. I called Mr. Reeves.
Well, that's fine. But it's just, so that's why I was wondering, will this be under individual consideration? Okay.
Yes, it will. 'Cause I did it today already. But I, I went over to agenda review and it said, it was on there, on the agenda review.
Oh, yes, you did that today. Okay, very good. Well, thank you.
But I, I, I called Mr. Reeves about it today, 'cause I still had a question about it. I didn't know if they, if the board members needed to request it, you know, early, 'cause they get it early, request it early, so it could be advertised in the, I don't, and he told me no.
No.
So, I mean, I was just trying to clarify.
Okay.
I, I, I promise y'all, I wanna do things right. I promise you that.
Well, no, we know that, Frankie. No problem, for sure. I mean, this is, this is an important thing.
So we need to move on.
Yeah, okay, we're finished with that.
See, and that's, that's, that was the point of the consent agenda items.
Okay, we're good.
Everybody hearts clear, minds clear?
No, I would just like to apologize to all of our staff that was offended by, you know, some of the comments that were made here this evening. And I just wanna, just reiterate to you all that we appreciate you, and you are working hard, and we believe that you are more than capable to do your job on a daily basis. So, thank you.
Okay. Everybody clear?